Yeah, I'm good. Yeah.
All right, we'll call this meeting ordered. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. Busy day to come away for this important meeting. First, we have approval of agenda items.
I move accept agenda items as written.
Second.
Motion is second. All of you raise your right hand. Take what you can. Under new business, resolution 112101, and resolution authorizing Marlboro County to acquire and purchase properties located in Marlboro County industrial park on Bennettville side. Mr. Mullen?
Mr. Chairman, a few meetings back, council approved authorized step by the negotiating to acquire this land. If you look in two, take the two tabs, I can back to see some flats and maps. Basically, it allows us to swap a piece of land with what used to be Ox Bodies Company for another piece near the electrical substation behind their facility. And y'all have approved to provide them with that land at no charge earlier this year for them to expand. But they were gracious enough to count that towards a swap for this other piece that'll go for an economic development project. The other portion of land is at entrance, kind of around the convenience store there, and that's part of the effort to improve the appearance and the access to the park. So both of those are on this ordinance or this resolution. Require the resolution to purchase property, and it requires an ordinance and a public hearing to dispose of or sell a piece of property. And y'all have final reading of taking part of this land that you're getting ready to acquire and provide it to an industrial prospect at the next meeting. So you can see all the details on two A. I can answer any questions about it. It's also a legitimate to allow you economic development funds. If we can, we'll use some state grant monies, but we are asking for approval to fund it all out of the county's economic development fund.
At the final reading, is there be more detail than iron out with the dollar amount and everything?
Well, it's all in there. It's for the purchase of it, total that we're asking is eighty-five thousand dollars. And that includes, you know, some of it we get for free, some of it we're having to buy. And that's what the owner wanted, so, you know, it's kind of hard to, you know, if you sell something, you can get an appraisal.
Yeah, I got you.
So those details are there. And then at the final reading of then providing that land back out, we'll be able to talk about the economic development project and the money they're bringing to the county and all that good stuff there.
What's the acre to on that?
The piece that we're, well, there's three pieces. So the one piece that we're providing to the industrial performance partners, which is behind Ox Bodies, is one acre, like even. And then the piece that we're getting for that is 1.06 acres. And then the other piece is just like six acres. Six acres. Yeah, yes, sir.
Any more questions?
I move we accept resolution 112101.
Sir.
The motion is second. All of you raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Next, acceptance of bids. Marlboro County external digital sign.
You can see in tab C, I mean, excuse me, tab three, which is also C. You can't wait to see one, two, three. I guess that's how my brain works. We did put out for proposals for a digital sign that we've been talking about. We had five respondents. And when you do a request for a proposal, you judge it on several different factors, and you can see those there. Not just money. But in this case, the staff of Mr. Carabo at Seabaker who were involved in reviewing this proposals, and they ranked Stewart signs the highest. Again, costed everything, the cost was thirty-two thousand, six, six, three. So when we ask you all to approve this, we would ask that you approve it and allow us to use this bid if we want to buy two within that budget amount you've already set aside. You already put aside sixty thousand dollars for signs.
Okay.
So the price came in a lot lower than we thought. And assuming we find location and all that, we could go ahead and get two.
Is the design available?
It's just about like what you saw with the taper and the thing. There's a picture in here?
Yeah.
The design is a little bit flexible, so we can look at that and make sure it matches. But it was a everything on top and then a metal post that you can see on.
It's digital, where we can, you can control it, or somebody from the county can control it? Just making sure it's acres for acres.
Well, that's, you know, that's what.
The only thing I see is the twelve, fourteen week period, waiting period on it, where that changed, right? Because there was a four week waiting period.
That's the, what we, the response we got. And I think what they're doing is when we made them hold it down and say, what is your lead time? They went long. All of them were like, well, we probably can get it sooner, but we don't want to oblige any sooner. So it's every day and everything we do, it's like lead times are just crazy right now. But once, you know, assuming y'all approve this, we'll go ahead and issue a PO today. So we'll get it rolling.
Will we see a version of what it would look like prior to it coming?
You can if you want to. Do you want to, I mean, yeah, I mean, we could do that. I mean, you've seen the design.
I've seen the design that I showed you. If it's the same design, you're telling me that's the same design.
Yeah, it could be somewhat different. There was one that was different, but most, all of them were the exact same, just the same. I think the only difference, Mr. Strohman, was that the base, the taper was straight out.
If you wanted to speak, or the chairman wanted to speak, put a message on there with your face, your message. Is it capable of doing that? Because the other one was, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, just there, everything that late for two has been involved in it. So, you know, they, several hours looking at.
They use the same criteria that I put.
And so it's remotely controlled over there in the internet. Hard wired in the ground, and the message can be controlled remotely. If we were to get some more, I think we can control them all off the same thing. So, you know, you can send the same signal out and all that.
Right, okay.
Does video interact?
Video, that's my.
It's nice. And, you know, part of their criteria was the reputation and the past experience and all the references of other people. And that Stewart signs is very highly rated thing. And they made their own sign, that was impressive. Whereas some of the other respondents were going out and digging from somewhere. These people actually made their own signs.
More questions? Not, do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion is second. All of you raise your right hand. opposed? You abstain? One abstain.
I would love to see a final project approval, so we can actually know what we're getting before it gets here. I mean, Mr. Strohman has been in a part of looking at it, but I was thinking nobody else on council has seen any type of design or any type of picture of what that particular sign would look like. So for me and my personal, we'll be able to look at something and make sure that, you know, if I'm voting for it or something, that I'm voting for it or not.
Well, I mean, we have no problem with delaying it until December 6th and bringing you something, then you can do it then. You'll knock your lead time out a little bit, and probably won't hurt it too bad. But that's up to you all.
It's been Mr. Strohman's lady.
Yeah, I'm good. I've got confidence. I'm familiar with Stewart sign.
We're good? Okay. All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Up next, presentation, redistricting process, introduction, Mr. Frank Rainwater, Secretary of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. Mr. Mullen?
We have Mr. Frank Rainwater and Paul Athan, did I say your name right, Paul? From Revenue and Fiscal Affairs, and they've got a presentation about redistricting. I'm gonna turn it over to them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Again, my name is Frank Rainwater, and I'm the executive director with Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. Appreciate the opportunity to work with Marlboro County on redistricting. Our office has been doing this for a number of years, and we appreciate the service that we're able to provide to you. My comments today are going to talk about two things. Basically, I'm gonna talk about process and then criteria. This is very much an educational part of the program. We don't have any new maps to show you because there are some decisions you have to make. And part of this, we think it's important for you to have a public hearing like this so others can have an opportunity to understand what's going on and provide feedback to the process. So what we, about the process today, we just want to kind of update you what the new census numbers have shown you, how your districts have changed, who has to give up district, I mean, who has to give up population, who has to gain population. Then when we go through the criteria, I'm also going to talk about some decisions you have to make. Some of this is numbers driven, and we can draw some of these numbers from the big picture here in Columbia. However, there's a lot of community interest, and we need that feedback from you on how you want to proceed and what your districts are, and we will talk about that in just a minute. So after this presentation, you know, if you decide to work with our office, continue to work with our office, we ask that you have one council talk amongst themselves, establish some priorities, and have one person to work with us as a conduit to help with that, and we'll be back in touch. So to begin with, you have the report there, I believe that's been shared with you, and I want to highlight some things. I'm sorry, it's a little slow here. Just highlight what's going on. So to begin in the middle of the report, your county is probably one of the more typical redistricting projects. And when I say more typical, you look at the graph here on this page that I'm presenting to you. And that shows your different populations, how it's changed over the last two or last three censuses. Your total population has declined in Marlboro County, but when you look at this, your white and black population have both declined. We have other counties where those populations have gone different ways, and that's created a whole new set of dynamics. But in this case, your population change has been somewhat proportional, increase in the other population and the multi-race. But as far as going forward, again, this kind of will lay the groundwork when we go forward. So a couple of things are important that we need to highlight before I start getting into the presentation, is that ten years ago and in prior decades, counties in South Carolina were subject to something called preclearance. That when you had your plan approved, or your redistricting plan approved by your council, you had to then submit to the Department of Justice for preclearance, and they had to sign off on that. That requirement has been removed, so you no longer need anybody else's approval to implement your plan. The good part about is that you're on your own, you don't require anybody's approval. The bad part about, it does put you a little bit more at risk. If the Department of Justice precleared this as part of the Voting Rights Act, you had some level of assurance you would not be sued under the Voting Rights Act. But there are other elements you still could be subject to suit for. So part of what we want to explain to you is make sure you identify, that we identify for you all the key factors, and that you have to decide for yourself, what is the level of risk? And some of these factors are competing factors. You're gonna have to balance a lot of issues, but the bottom line is, you need to decide on the level of risk you want to take, how perfect you want your plan to be versus how much you have some variance in there. Some of the ideas we're talking about are pretty much black and white, you know, you either can or you can't. But then there's a lot of gray areas that you have some decisions to make, and that's what we want to outline for you. In essence, this is a balancing test. You're gonna have to balance several different factors on what's the right plan for you. What works well in McCormick, excuse me, Marlboro County may not work well in McCormick County, or Jasper County, or Beaufort. Every county is different. So we just want to highlight for that, for you to consider all these factors, and you can provide some input on what makes sense for Marlboro County here. So the first part of the plan is about one person, one vote. And that is the basic requirement of the Fourteenth Amendment, that the reason we redistrict is we want everybody's voice in the county to weigh about the same. And what do we mean by that? Let's take a very basic example. If you had one county council district that had 100 people, and you had another county council district that had 200 people, well, that district with 200 people, their voices count half as much as the 100. Because with 100 people, that council person only has to listen to 100 people. If it's a 200-person district, they're having to listen to twice as many voices. So that, your voice gets drowned out, so to speak, or it counts half as much if you have 200 people instead of 100 people. So the purpose of one person, one vote would be to equalize that and to make that two districts of 150 each, and that way those voices count the same. But the courts have provided some variance on local governments. You don't have to be so perfect. There's something called a variance or deviation, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But when we look at Marlboro County here, your ideal district needs to be about 3,014 people. And what we have presented for you here, a chart on the right showing which districts are above that and which districts are below that. So districts one, two, three, six, and seven have to give up population. Most notably, one and two are the highest areas, and they're gonna have to give up the most population. And you're trying to shift some of that population into districts four, five, and eight. So that's, that's part of the first step here, is you're gonna have to give up voters in some districts to move into the other districts. Now, I will say in this analysis, we have excluded the prison populations. This doesn't affect aid to subs or anything else, this is to help equalize the voting. Prison gerrymandering has become an issue much more in the last decade. A lot of courts have declared that unconstitutional if you have too large of a prison population in your area because those prisoners cannot vote, and you don't have to listen to those prisoners, so to speak. The courts have ruled in this case, you know, you're talking about a third of the district, potential district being in a prison, and that's where the courts have started. In court cases I have read, they've drawn the line. So we're taking the prisons out of this as far as equalizing one person, one vote. But you see there, the percentages on the left in the table there. District one has 228 too many people. That's 7.56% above the maximum, or above the goal here. District two has 218 people above. But then you see that districts four, five, and eight there have over 100 people below. So when we talk about deviation, you take the highest district, the highest percentage over, that would be district one at 7.56%. And then you take the lowest district, that is over 8%, district five there. When you look at the range between the highest and lowest, that's 16%. The courts have said the maximum you can be is 10%. So we've got to get those deviations down. We're gonna have to move people out of one, two, three, and maybe even six. District seven may or may not be affected, then you've got to move them into the other districts. So when I talk about the range, ideally, you want one district that, let's say, is maybe 2.5% over and 2.5% below. That's our recommendation to have 5%. You may decide 3% is great for Dillon, excuse me, Marlboro County. You may decide 8% is a better number. Again, what the courts have said, if you are over 10%, you have to redistrict. If you are under 10%, you may or may not have to, but the lower you go, the stronger your plan is. But that's, that's a subject of risk there. We've been recommending 5% to the counties. Some counties are doing three, some are doing six. So that's just a factor you have to weigh here in Marlboro County. So that's one person, one vote, and your goal there, you want to try to equalize those voices among each of the districts. So this is your current districts, and again, we have not drawn a new map yet because we need some input from you. But you see districts one and two at the top, those were your largest population areas. So you're gonna have to move districts, people out of district one into these other districts, but you're gonna have to go through district two. So there's gonna be, I think, significant change in one and two just to get to those districts that you need to affect. How do we do that? Depends on your input. Do we go through the northern part of the district to do that? Do we go through the southern part of the district? Do we go through the middle of the district, or some, or some combination? That's some of the decisions council has to make. But you're trying to get from one and two especially into those other districts that need population. So that's part of the challenge, and I think that's a nice graph showing you where you are with that. So that's one person, one vote, in trying to equalize a number of votes. The second thing you have to do is respect the Voting Rights Act. Now, it's a balancing test. Under the equal protection clause, the Fourteenth Amendment, the courts have said you cannot use race as a predominant factor. That's considered unconstitutional. If you can, if you do look at race stronger than the other categories, you better have an awfully, awfully, awfully good reason, or you could be subject to risk. One of those reasons is the Voting Rights Act. The Voting Rights Act says you have to make sure minority communities can elect, have the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. Now, when we look over here, your county's pretty much split. You know, you're about balanced, black and white. You have 41% white population, 49% black population, and a mix of the other. And your districts are kind of about half and half. So you're in a pretty good position here, and you don't have a lot of change in your overall population mix. But when you look at the Voting Rights Act, what has changed is something called retroaggression. When the Department of Justice precleared this, they looked at percentage population on their section five analysis. That's no longer the case, that has been part that's been ruled unconstitutional. But there's a new balance test that you have to look at. You have to look at, is the minority community compact? Do they vote as a cohesive group? And does the white population vote as a block against them? Well, again, you've got pretty much a balance here. I don't see a lot of issues. It does not appear you have racially polarized voting in this, in this county. So this is a little bit easier effect. You're gonna have to move some population out, but you want to pay attention here to those columns there that says percent DOJ black, that is percent of the minority population. But especially there, that second part, that percent NH, that's non-Hispanic DOJ black VAP. VAP is voting age population. So when you make these adjustments, you've got a white district that's got too many people, you've got a black district that's got too many people. But again, we try to look at those percentages to maintain, in this particular case, because there's not a lot of shift in your overall county, trying to keep those percentages somewhat balanced or somewhat in perspective there. So that's basically what the Voting Rights requires, if you got to pay attention to make sure minority communities have an opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. But again, your county's kind of 50/50. It's not like you've got a 75/25 in one way or the other, where that issue becomes a lot more sensitive. So those are some of the numbers that we look at, and it's very easy looking, standing in Columbia, to look and just balance this on the piece of paper. But there are some other things that you have to take into account, and these are called traditional redistricting principles. And this is what the courts have recognized, there are other key factors that you have to take into account when you're doing redistricting. One, you have to make sure each of your districts are contiguous. Now, the smallest unit of data we work with is called a census block. And we take all these census blocks and put them together to build your district and to build voting precincts. What the courts have said is you want those to be contiguous. Every part of your district has to touch another part of the district. You really can't have a district looking like a checkerboard and just jumping from pot to pot, spot to spot. So first criteria, you have to make sure all your districts are contiguous. The next thing the court likes to look at is make sure your districts are compact. Again, you don't want your district looking like a checkerboard jumping from spot all around the whole area. You try to make sure districts are compact. Now, there is a statistical model to do that, but it's a lot of, that has to do with an eye test. Does it look like a compact district? Not all the census blocks are the same size, they don't geographically or population-wise, so sometimes things look a little odd there. But compactness is, and contiguousness are two big important factors. One other thing we look at is we try to minimize the voting of precincts. Now, this is not always the case, but you want it, try to make it easier on your voters. So when you draw a district, you're not splitting a precinct. You like for all those precincts to be uniform, so if somebody goes into a precinct, they're just voting on one county council race. That's not always the case, because when you look at one person, one vote, sometimes you got to split a precinct to balance that population, but we try to minimize that. The bottom line is, the lines will be drawn somewhere, and sometimes it'll make sense for one criteria but not make sense for the other. But that's part of the balancing y'all have to take into effect. The two biggest things that y'all have to weigh in on are your communities of interest and your core districts. The courts have recognized that it's certainly acceptable for you to determine what is that core district. So if you've got the districts one and two, you're having to give up population, you have some say on what makes sense. I don't want to split the heart of part of your district, so to speak. You have to tell us in those districts, where do we need to give up population? Is it the northern end, western end, southern end? Is it a new development? But that's a community of, what, excuse me, what's your core district? And you have to provide input on that. It doesn't necessarily jump out to me looking at a map. The other thing, very similar to that, that you have to weigh in on what are communities of interest. And I know you have a lot of communities represented here. You have cities that are kind of whole. I know the city of Bennettville is kind of split, but again, sometimes you've got, somebody's gonna get split, it happens all over. But you have to decide what is that community of interest? You know, is it an area? Is it a neighborhood? Is it a school zone? Is it a work zone? What is that? Again, these are features that don't pop up on a map and just by looking at numbers. So in hearing all this, what we need for you to do, if you're gonna work with us, what we'd like for you is consider all these factors, and then kind of tell us what's your priorities. I mean, we, you know, how close to this one person, one vote you think we need to get? Is 5% acceptable, or do you want to go a little bit more, or a little bit tighter, or a little bit larger on that? But, you know, kind of tell us, especially in district, those districts that have to give up, where does it make sense to give up that population? I think district two last time had a big shift, and district two's gonna be shifted this time. But that is something you need to tell us, what's important. So, Mr. Chairman, that's the bulk of my comments. I'll be glad to take any questions from you or members, or however you'd like to proceed at this point.
Thank you for that presentation. I mean, gives us kind of a overview. I know we have some new council members on that since redistricting was years ago, so it kind of brings it to light of what, what we have to do, you know, and the graph shows us kind of where we need to get. So any council members have any comments or questions at this time?
On your redistricting, and the information you gave is very, very thorough, and it was a lot of information that probably opened my eyes anyway, about cutting off the top and moving people around. When you say you want the council to select a representative to help navigate this split, like from one, on district one to district two, and I think you said district seven? And to make, kind of make it, each one, one person, one vote, make it shift better, you want a representative from the council to help y'all do that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, part of what's driving that is, the census is normally released in April, and we have the summer to do this. However, the print census didn't really get released to September. You have to have this done in time for filing for the middle of March, and you're one of over 30 counties we're working with. And so, you know, I love my family, I'm gonna try to be with them over the holidays. But, no, I mean, process is working very well because technology has helped. But we can go some different ways. You know, we like one person. I want, I want somebody to provide us the consensus of this, because we're gonna have to take all your factors and still balancing it. Once we have a plan, we can share you that plan. You may not like that plan. You may say, nope, Frank, you missed something, go back, you know, we need you to rebalance this. So it may take more than one iteration, and we can share that with you and get the feedback before you get a plan that you're comfortable going forward on that. So, again, just based on the recent court decisions, I think it's a lot more of an interactive process, and because of time, you know, we're asking for one person, because I don't want to be responsible, why did I listen to this one person or this person? You know, I want, I want council to come. I think the process works better if council works together and provides a clear set of direction.
So we can come up with our own scenario?
Yes, sir.
And then give it to you?
Yes.
Are you the only one that's gonna, are you the only one that we can work with?
No, I mean, different counties, some county, I mean, we do this as a service, and I was telling you a minute, I don't get paid any more, any less, whether I do this county or not. It's something we can do. Some counties do their own. They simply use their staff, you know, if they have the GIS technology to do it. Some counties hire a consultant to do it. Each one's, each one's different, and it's what works best for your county, but it's something that we do. We've traditionally done this for 40 years. When I first came here, shortly after we started doing this, we got called as the technical advisors to the US federal courts on a school board. advisors to the U.S. Federal Courts on, on a school board case here in South Carolina. So, it's something we do, and we try to balance between the facts and, and the inside, you know, what you have to do for, for your, for your communities of interest.
Okay. I want to take everybody's question, but I do have one more question that pertains to, you say this information, you took the prison population out. When you say you took the prison population, you're not talking about that, that block up there, or you're just talking about inmate?
Inmate population, the inmates.
That whole block up there?
Yeah. No, it's the inmates, it's because we get a separate count for the, what they call group quarters, and groups are reported separately. I do not know if there are other people in that block. I haven't looked at it that closely. But, but we took out what was reported as the prison population in that block. Now, whether that was a hundred percent of that block or fifty percent, we just took out the inmate count.
Yeah, I think it's important, because I've seen numbers that are different from what you just reported. So, I think it's important that if we're gonna go through this process correctly, that we get a variance of different perspectives, so we can go into it with, with an accurate, you know, picture of what our county needs to look like from this, I mean, districting process. The numbers that, that I'm looking at in this report are different from the numbers that I looked at in other reports. So, I think as a council, you know, we need to do our due diligence and, and understand that there's a broad perspective of this process, and just like we did with this, this sign process, we looked at different, you know, dispensations of, of what it looks like, and I think we need to take this process on in the same engagement as well.
Yeah, certainly, if you find something that doesn't look right, you know, we're open to go back and, and review that. So, I mean, this is part of it. It's part of an educational process. Let's make sure we got everything right to start with, and then you got the information. Our goal is to make sure you got the right information and make the decisions you need.
Your numbers come straight from the census?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater, I'm confused. So, with the prisons, did you take the whole census block out with the prisons located there, or only the number of people in the prisons?
Only the number of people in the prisons.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't, yeah, it's just, like I said, I just don't know in that block, were there other people? Basically, if there are other people in that block besides the prison, they should still be there.
They should still be there.
They should still be there.
And another question I had is, can you provide council with maps like you have? With the census blocks identified on the maps and the number of people in the census block?
Yes, yeah, and that's actually-
They sit down and start looking, and they can say, well, that little piece will do this, and that little piece will do that?
Well, that's actually available on our website, and I'll send that link to you. But some talented people in our staff have developed that now, because we're getting a lot of questions like that. So, you can go into your county and pull up each census block and get the total count and the population and the demographic counts and kind of look at that. But I'll, I'll send that link so you can forward it to council.
They sit down and start looking, and they give you, I know this adds this, and this adds that.
Yeah.
Because it's obvious that, you know, the, the lines need to be changed, because if you're looking at the current dispensation of the map, there's a lot of communities that are totally broken up, you know, like cracking and packing type situation, and we really need to, you know, take this process in, in truth and fidelity and, and do it right this time.
And that's, yeah, that's part of it, to give you the information. I mean, I am not your attorney. I'm here as a professional offering a service to assist you, but the emphasis I'm making to all the counties and cities we're working with, it is your plan, you know, and if you get sued, it's what you have to defend and feel comfortable with.
What's the time, Ray, when we need to have a final, final two?
Well, there's a couple of ways to do that, and what a lot of counties are doing is to adopt redistricting by title only, and just have, just have a first reading done. It does take three readings for a county, so you may want to consider doing a, a title only, and then have a, you know, the first plan maybe at, at second reading, and the final plan at third reading, if you want to do a special meeting in between. But, I mean, again, different counties are doing this. What works best for Marlboro County is gonna be different than another county. But it's common practice to adopt it by title only this month or December, and that gives you January and February to, to knock it out, if it, if it takes that long. Again, yours is a little bit more traditional and straightforward. It shouldn't be as complicated, I would think, as some of the other counties and cities we're working with.
And it has to be in place by the time people want, in June, that we run it and the new redistricting law.
It has to be in place by the time they file in the middle of, of March. So, yeah, ideally, you know, you like to get it done before the, certainly is possible to give everybody a month on that. And I'm sorry, I think you did ask me the question. It takes us about two weeks. So, if you provided feedback to us, let's say, a week from today, I'm just standard saying, give us about two weeks to get a response back to you. Kind of just depends on who else we're working on and how many we've got in, in the thing, how many are basically in the hopper, so to speak.
Any more comments? Questions, Mr. Rainwater?
Mr. Chair.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, we'll talk afterwards, we'll get it afterwards.
I had a question for him.
What's that?
I had a question for him.
Yeah, yeah, we can't answer questions from all this right now, but, yeah. There'll be a public hearing before, before that's approved, so there'll be a time for that. Any more?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that I've got to do what y'all want me to do. I think that they expect is to get these maps from him and show you the census blocks, so you can sit down, have a workshop, and look at the give and take in the neighborhood and the house, puts neighborhoods and all that. Would that be the easiest way for us to deal with y'all, if it's a whole census block? And that's super easy, y'all?
Again, yeah, we'll, we'll give you the link, and you can look at it and have some idea what's going. Again, you need all the information and all the tools to do this, so I think that's the simplest thing.
And we have to, we need to print it, so we can print out big things for everybody to look at and all that.
I do think we need to at least get some other perspective as well, if we're looking at this process from full view. You know, I appreciate the numbers and, and information, because I'm learning, but I also know that there, there are other perspectives out there that we need to have, you know, do our, our true due diligence in this process, this the next ten years, you know, and we want to make sure that, that we, we do our very, very best to adhere to federal policy, but also do what's best for our county as well.
Well, you do have to have a lot of things to balance, and that's, that's what you have to do.
So, what, what you, I mean, what kind of other thing would you want?
I'm saying, we getting this perspective, you know, but like I said, there are other people interested in this process that can provide us a perspective as well, as we move forward with this whole redistricting process.
Yeah. Let me cut you off. Yeah, I think you were just giving us the, the process of what we have to do.
Yeah, but if we're talking about getting information to him to, to assist with this process, I think we need other perspective as well, as we can continue to engage, but we need other perspective as well, because if we leave this meeting saying, you know, we're gonna work with Mr. Rainwater, then it's these numbers and information that we're engaging, but if we looking at the other perspective of people who's presenting, just like Mr. Rainwater is, so now we have a full view of how we can, you know, really and truly look at what's best for, you know, our, our entire county.
Yeah, I don't think we'll make a decision today of who, who to work with.
We have no information today.
I mean, I mean, I, I think this information here is for a process, to be able, to be able to get, 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 if we say we want him to give us the, the information from his process, he can give us the link from the State Affairs website that we're here. I mean, this is, this is from the state.
But what I'm saying, I still think we need different perspectives.
From where? I guess, I guess from where as well? Whenever I say different perspectives, from where?
Well, we want, we want the, I'm sorry.
No, no, I mean, that's what, that's what I want to talk about.
We want the-
There are other Mr. Rainwaters on the county that can give us-
I mean, from the citizens, we want information from different sources in the city. We, there are different maps out there that can be drawn, and we can, we can, the maps that he's gonna provide back for, from us, that's gonna be, I think you said that you didn't have a, a particular map that you've already set, because we had to set the criteria for it, right?
Yeah, that's right.
So, what you have now is, is the existing map.
Correct.
So, if we get another map showing, showing it with this criteria-
Only thing that, the only thing that we have is council's decision, so the map that will come to us, yeah, we could, we, we do want input from everybody, but it, but so, but the map that we get here would be for us a starting point, for what we have now, with the demographics and everything in it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, if, if, and the way it's broke up now is, whenever in 2010, we had to do it, we had to balance the population minority, majority, minority, and keep it, so the lines went all kind of wiggly, then the populations changed, so then it went from one vote, one voice, one vote, so that makes it change again. So, yeah, we don't, what we do want to make sure is, that, you know, is, we, we look at it, that even though we do have input, is if, if you're, I'm just saying, your parents are living one side of the road, we don't want somebody else to draw them out. You want them to vote for you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's, that's the kind of thing we, well, we've got to start with, with something, at least to get us some information in our hands. So, with, with the number there, you know, the population's out, we, I mean, I think we could, we'll look at every population, every census. There was only one census, is that correct, that we have numbers for?
Yeah, but interpretation of the numbers can be different based on who's presenting and based on information that we get, that's what I'm saying.
If it's the population, it's the same census from the population, it's the same census, so everybody has to work off one census. I mean, I, I don't want to take things from this.
It's just one map, it's just one map, yeah. I'm asking the question, it's just one map, you know, so the map that Mr. Rainwater gonna send out, it's the same map if, if Jack Ripley gonna send one, right?
The map that's on his website is right here now.
Let's get the information that he willing to give us, to study it, come together and look at it before we get all out of shape with it, and then we come together and get some consensus on what way we gonna go from there. Then he said it's our, our decision to make, for its conclusion of it. But the only thing you can do, we can sit here and talk all day, we got to get the stuff in our hands, the maps or whatever, let's look at it, then we make some decisions from there and go for it. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Rainwater?
Mr. Rainwater, just the mechanics, compared to what you all tell me?
Yeah, we got to get the information.
We understand that.
They have a county, and you know, what's going on with the county. And you're gonna have here and here, so if there's somebody from outside the county that y'all are coming, won't come in here, I mean, I would think you all controlled with, you could tell anyone to do it.
We in control.
And the fact of the matter, we were back on the ground.
We got to make a decision.
And now, that, we, we only got a certain amount of time, you know? Time is not on our side right now. But like I said, I agree with other members of council. On both sides, there's a lot of perspective that we want to intertwine and, and, but the first thing we do, we got to get a few, a full view of a map, like the link you said. Let her get that, let, um, administrator put on a big map, so we all can chime in and, and look at it, and then if we bring in, so outside people that are of, of interest, you know, let them give us added input. But like I said, at the end of the day, it's, it's up to us as a team to do what's best for the county for the next ten years, like Dr. Johnson just mentioned. It is our decision, it is a big decision, but one thing that we all know, and we all grown and understand, it's okay to disagree, but one thing we do know, we got, we gotta get the map, and we got time not on our side. Because we know, though that, in, no later than mid-January, late-January, they're gonna have, somebody got to have it in their hands, to put in their hand. So, our work is cut out. So, the order for us to get started, we need to get started.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, I think, talking with Mr. Muntin earlier, I understand that your school boards follow the same as county councils, so we've been provided in our maps, we do have all your, all of you, and your addresses there, and we have the school boards, because it'd be our intent not to make sure we put two people together. So, I mean, that's just another factor, because just be aware of, you're gonna impact the school boards too.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, we, we, we got, we got a map, and I guess, so I guess the, the thing is, let me back, is, is Mr. Wood said, we, we've got to get the ball rolling, because we're gonna run out of time. I mean, if, if we're working with just census numbers, whoever sends us, I mean, we're gonna look, but it would have to be the same census numbers. And I'm looking at Ms. Purley, because I know she worked hard on, it would have to be the same numbers that we could, we would just have to be those numbers, you know, if, if there's a number off from a miscalculation or number-wise, but we're still gonna have those census numbers, but we got to get in the pipeline, you know? So, it's gonna take a lot of work for us to at least send it to somebody to put it together, to get back to us, so we can have a final thing to vote on. So, I think that's where we, I think I got my glasses on, but I think that's where we're at now, so. I thought you was raising your hand. No, no, I thought you was raising your hand. So, so we, we need to decide on somebody today?
Well, I mean, that's not the all. I mean, I think there's some interest behind the scenes of bringing somebody else in to do this. These guys will do whatever you tell them to do.
No.
The numbers that he's presenting on the screen are the actual numbers in the district per the census, and while we confirm it doesn't have the prison stuff screwed up, it is what it is. I mean, and decides who to do it with, Chairman, y'all.
Correct.
You're, you're, and we can get maps, maybe bigger than those, to lay out the census blocks on it, that I would think probably we all work with, you all, mark up the communities, so you make sure you know what little groups of people are.
Any more?
For whatever y'all, you know, live on our side, I mean, we'll-
But he, he, he said he would send you the link to the thing, so we could get started. I mean, so that would be a, a way.
Yeah, if we have to go outside and pay, you know, somebody to print the maps differently than we can front of you or whatever, we'll get it all done. Y'all can sit with a work session, and everybody just get around the maps and start looking at it.
That's, yeah, that's, yeah, there's no way to get around it. I mean, it's, we're gonna have to be one with a pencil drawing the, kind of the line. I got, I got a feeling is, to get the two hundred, I mean, with the census block, you know, you don't want to draw more. I mean, it's, you know, we, last time it was to pick up, you know, it was pick up twenty-five and twenty-five, you know, we, you know, you had to lose some and gain some, so you had to just draw that line squiggly, so the new thing, the one, the one vote, one voice is different for me. I never, we didn't have that before, so that's new for this, new for this council to, to take in the consideration, so. All right, anything else?
You said we have to make a, a vote on, on this company here? Or, I'm, I'm asking a question, I don't know. Honestly, he did a presentation, but we, do we got to make a decision? Is that what y'all saying? No, you saying, Mr. Chairman? Do we got to make a decision on whether we go with Rainwater or not?
He can send it to us, I mean, we can, I mean, somebody's gonna have to get the ball rolling. I mean, this is from, I mean, from what I see is Revenue and Physical Affairs Office, so, uh, uh, the state, so I mean, yeah, well, we got to get something happening.
No, I'm saying, do you need a vote when I'm asking the question? Do we need a vote on this? I'm asking the-
I should know what we're gonna do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but a twenty-minute presentation shouldn't give us, especially we haven't gotten all perspectives. You know, no disrespect to Mr. Rainwater, I'm pretty sure he's very efficient at what he's doing, but if we took the process to go through some sign proposal and get four different quotes and proposals, we don't take the same engagement with this redistricting process as well? That's all I'm saying. We have to continue to expand, you know, what the view is, and, and so when we do look at those maps, and we are coming together as a council, we know the different perspective of, of, of what our county needs to look like that's gonna follow the federal guideline, but also be in the best interest of, of our county.
I think-
I think you're gonna have a public hearing, because you're gonna, you're gonna receive that, and you're gonna draw a map.
Yeah.
I don't think these guys-
They're not gonna draw a map.
Then come back, I'm so much sure everybody's understanding, they're not gonna come to Then come back, I just want to make sure everybody understands it. They're not going to come to your public hearings and listen to what's said and then come back to sample map.
No.
Y'all are going to do that. And then he's just going to draw it to what y'all determine from this, this Purley Lawson or this, whoever lives on thirty-eight North or whatever. They're not going to come back with ideas. They're going to take what you give them from your input and draw it. So you have complete control of that. And you can hear every perspective and all that in the community that comes to your meeting.
So, yeah, so that, I mean, I, I think you're going to have the same outcome from everybody, uh, no matter what. Just, I mean, you have to do the, that's, is that correct? The, the law is the one voice, one vote. You got to equalize it. It's close to, if we say we're going to do three percent, it, it don't matter what, nobody said, we, we all got to do three percent.
Well, listen, we, we understand, uh, I, I understand that, um, this map is here. Population is not drawn on this map, okay? Now, it's, it's fine to get started in this process, but for two hundred votes, if, if Dr. Johnson has, if, if, who's in this one? That's you, right? If you have to lose two hundred votes, Dr. Johnson has to lose two hundred votes. It's, it's, it really is imperative where, where those votes are, are taken from.
Correct.
And different perspective of where they are taken from and all of that's out there. I know right now, this is the, the meeting.
Correct.
This isn't the meeting. The meeting that we're going, I guess we're going to decipher all of that from will be the public forum. That's the way I'm understanding it.
It's going to be a workshop.
You have a workshop, you have a workshop.
Right, and at that, there are different scenarios. This is where I was saying that there are different maps out there. There are different map that show what would happen if you take it from the northern section and what would happen if you take it. It, it would affect you, y'all, it'd affect you. You know, I mean, in a, in a, in a real prevalent way, if you do it the wrong way.
But if, if I'm going to be responsible for it, I want it, I will, if I could be sued, I don't want to-
I just want you all to look at it, that's all. To look at it. And, and that's what we're saying. We're going to let the whole council look at it. And then if we come up with something even different from that, it's, it's okay.
Whether somebody's been drawing it or not.
No, there's plenty of maps been drawn. This one hasn't been drawn.
But, but if we have control of the map, there's, there's, nobody's going to draw my map. I'm, I'm one voice on council. Nobody's going to draw my map but me.
That's right, that's your, that's your district.
Yeah, that's my district.
That's not what we're saying. You, you all are misunderstanding what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that there, there have been people, this isn't new coming down the pipe. And, and I apologize for saying, you know, going through this in front of our speaker. But this isn't new coming down the pipe. There, there, there are professionals that go through this all the time. You know, this is not new to the African-American community. You know, um, jury mandating and, and cracking and stacking, all of that stuff has been in our community for a while. So this is not new to us. It may, the process of how we go about redistricting may be new to us. But we still want this council to look at every avenue possible to make sure that it's fair. Just not us looking at it when it, in the proper place, you know what I mean?
Correct.
But the final decision has to be made by council.
Correct.
There's no doubt.
But we, we got to have an avenue so at least somebody can send whatever we get back to us.
And we're fine with that.
Yeah, that, I mean, and that's, I think that's what we're trying to get to today, at least have a, a, a avenue for a forward and, and back. I mean, the in-betweens is all of us and everybody else that would give us ideas. But we just got to have a forward and back. You know, I mean, it's to start somewhere to say, we're going to go from here, we're going to present all this stuff. And in due time, it's going to be back to us for a final vote so we can get to
That's right.
Everybody's, everything in the middle part will be done, but the start point and what's presented back to us will be, we, we would have a vote today and we would have a vote in February for everything in between. Now, I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing that we're looking at.
I tell you, everybody's saying the same thing, but we're saying it in a different way.
I think everybody's saying the same thing.
Everybody confused.
So. So. So we want to just move so we can at least get some ball rolling today. I mean, that's what we-
Well, I take it from what y'all said, get your map printed out, the census tract. I would suggest that you schedule meetings like between District One and Two because you're, you know, you, you need to have some of that where you're looking at things. And then, then have meetings where you have public hearings and this Lawson or someone come in and say, come split our community. And you take that into account. You know, send it to him and have him draw it up. And then you can analyze the statistics and make sure that the statistics are there.
And it's legal.
You know, make sure that nothing makes a problem.
Right.
District Four, Five, and Eight, and you're talking about six hundred and forty-seven people is what needs to do roughly to move to a hundred percent, uh, from the other five districts. But you're talking about a real, real lot of people. It's not like we got maybe a thousand people going to do this. Six hundred and forty-seven people is the three numbers that were short in those three districts. You're about to take districts that are joining each other to work together to see how they want to do it. Because two doesn't want to make people in one ill about the way they get moved or something. The other thing, they want to do it in a compact manner to work. You're, much as I hate to say it, you've got to move them in a compact manner to the next district. You can't skip around, if you say. So, I mean, it's going to be something deviating, it's going to deviate in that.
Yeah, for, you know, and that, you know, I, I guess the, it does, I mean, it does look all over the place. And we, it was complicated last time we had to do it. I mean, it was, I mean, the ones over here, it was complicated because we were really doing, I mean, during that is we had to make sure if you picked up, I mean, the, the twenty African-American votes, you had to pick up twenty white votes and you had to move. And that's the reason those lines was way, and so it's not easier, but it, just one voice, one vote, you know, we're, we're trying to keep it e- equal, you know. We, I, I know kind of a few people in my area that you might not know. Well, I want to know whether it was, there was to be twenty-five and twenty-five, you know, in, in, in ten Hispanic. We just say they, that's our demo- demographics. We could, you could pick them up and it wouldn't upset your demographics. Because you can only gain from, you could, you've got to take all two hundred of mine. Nobody else can take any. Yeah, you got to get all two hundred of mine. Then you'll have to give up four hundred on sake. Yeah, that's going to be, yeah, so.
And they are going, and those four hundred will go in Mr. Grizzly's district. And depending on who those districts are.
Maybe it would just go, some of them get a hundred and eighty-eight was the most, right? If I'm not mistaken, it's two sixty-three, so. Well, I, I think we just, at least we would have a, a avenue. I think we'd still meet what you want, bringing in everything else with, with maps and numbers and all that. If, you know, we, we can still look at all that, you know. The census numbers is what we have to go by. You know, and whatever I want is, we have to go by those census numbers. So that's why Ms. Purley worked so hard on those census numbers is to get it. So, because for meetings like today, we'll be here, so.
But we must recognize it's going to take some time and some effort.
Oh, yeah.
To do it correctly. And so we understand we're under, you know, time pressure. But we don't want to make sure that just because we need to get something done real quick, that we just do it real quickly and just move on to another thing. Because this is the next ten years of, of our population. You know, it, it doesn't matter about, you know, for me, you know, talking about reelection, getting reelected. I don't care anything about that. I just want to make sure that the lines are drawn correctly, that the lines are drawn and fair so we can move forward with this process. That, that, that's my biggest thing. But I'm not trying to keep a seat, but make sure that the lines are drawn where people in one side of the street are not in this district. And then right three or four houses down, they're in another district. And then we have three or four council members serving one area. That, that, that's, people don't know what. We want to make sure that the people get, uh, um, a, a fair representation, you know, from, 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 um, you know, this, um, redistricting process. And that's the, the most, um, thing for me is the people know who, who, who their council members are and they're knowing their district. And I don't have to jump across the street, you know, that Mr. Blackman is, is my councilman, but three houses down, you know, Councilman Woods is my, you know, and that's crazy.
Well, that, that'll be for us to, to decide. So we'll have-
The difficulty is why I have to run somewhere. That's what, Veniceville is really hard because, like, I think you go down into Rich's Park. But then you have, that's where you're going to have to go the same, the line's got to go somewhere. That's where you really got to try to work it out. Chairman, I'll make sure to get all of you printed a big map, uh, and deliver to you. So, uh, y'all know your community better than anybody, so I'll look at it and that kind of thing.
So again, so we find just, you know, at least we got a, a kind of, yeah.
We just set up a workshop, um, after the holiday, we have Thanksgiving. And, uh, so everybody can sit down and, and, um, chew the fat and, you know, argue, disagree and disagree and, you know, and start chopping things up.
Chairman, if I'm, if I'm in order, I'd like to make the motion that we allow Mr. Rainwater to start this process and, and give us the links and the maps and everything for us to get started on this process.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All of them, favor raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, um, also, um, I, um, we know it's going to be a long process, I think. Uh, we know the holiday season coming up, but I think that, um, we got to, uh, do the due diligence and schedule workshop rather than, um, Thanksgiving holidays. We don't need to wait till after Christmas holiday. I think we need to do it rather Thanksgiving holiday, um, so we can, um, at least get the, the first, um, level, first stage one. As soon as Mr. Munnell get the link and get the maps out, let everybody have, um, a couple hours to study. And then, um, we just set up a workshop. Um, call next council meeting is when?
The sixth.
December sixth. We, we, we might can do it December sixth.
Yeah, that's, that's, that would give us-
I mean, I, the more you go, uh, you know, there are parts of it that are very difficult. There's also parts that aren't very difficult. But you got to split it up and knock out the easy part and you have a little swamp and blums.
Yeah.
That could be the first thing.
December sixth.
Yeah, December sixth.
Slide it up a bit.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that, yeah, the earlier, if we want to just go to sixes, do a workshop before the council meeting, I think that would be a, uh, we can plan that kind of now and if that would work, we could just go ahead and put that out there.
Yeah.
That, I mean, yeah, that, that way we can go, everybody knows, you know, because, you know, it's hard. We, we got busy schedules, everybody. So if that works, everybody would just go ahead and plan that as a workshop before we get it done. Okay. Okay, you want to do it like at four-thirty-ish? Give us a little time?
Yeah, I took the whole day.
You took it for six?
Uh, we, we- It's important, it's important.
And if we're, I, I mean, I, I don't know if I'm going to work with you.
Yeah. Yeah, we start like at one-thirty and go through the evening.
Yeah.
We can send an email out and get it.
Yeah, we, we're going to-
One-thirty and go through the evening.
Yeah, we'll get, what we'll do, we'll, I'll get Ms. Patricia to send us some things out. We'll kind of respond back, get a number. And so, uh, it works. Everybody looks at their schedule instead of just jumping in, you know, and we'll go from there. But I think we, we need a couple hours to, a work session or more to at least look at the first maps. So, all right, anything else? All right, thank you. We call it a day, Mr. Chairman.